It is five fifteen, this July eleventh, Monday, and the Carroll City Council is now in session. Would you all please rise with me and join with me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, we have roll call, everybody here. Item number three on tonight's agenda is something I don't really want to have to do, but I guess they say that's the tough part of being the mayor, right? Is you gotta do things you just don't want to do. So are you gonna do this up front here?
Yeah, we do it there.
Perfect, sure. I'll meet you up front, front and center. Greg Schreck, this is, uh, it is difficult. It is.
Both ways.
You know, I know you as fire chief and building inspector and stuff, but I've known you as a friend just as long. And so this isn't, I'll give you a plaque for our friendship later.
Okay.
Listen, I think I'm speaking on behalf of the entire city council and city staff and certainly the entire city of Carroll with deepest gratitude for your indelible mark that you've left on this city. Your DNA and fingerprints are all over. So there's, you know, no getting out of anything now because this is well deserved and a difficult thing to do. I think we're in good hands, represented here quite well tonight by those who you have left your mark on as well and future to come. So listen, it is with much regret, but also with deep appreciation that we award you this certificate of appreciation and recognition for your service to the city of Carroll. And I guess we'll get to do this one more time, maybe less officially on July twenty-second, which you're all invited to come then too, I think that's a Friday. But would you all please join with me and give a credit?
The city councils, well, weren't you guys? It's tough, but, uh... I didn't think I'd do this. All right, it's been great. And I look at my career and feel thinking of the different councils I worked for. I had no grip when people went to me down. Yeah. And one of the best parts is the folks is here, you know, working with so many good people. It's been great. I'm sorry, I'm such a wreck. I didn't think I'd get this way, but so it's been great. And I look at the station and the equipment we have and it's top-notch. And that's because of the cooperation we've had with councils and we just hope that continues. So, like I say, I apologize for being such a wreck in here. Again, thank you guys for coming. It's been great and really appreciate you being here. So yeah, thank you to the council and it was a good run.
Okay.
I don't know if you thought much of that blabber. Again, thank you guys.
What do we do for an encore, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. We can't adjourn. We've got business to do, so we let it just go at that. Okay, we have before us tonight's consent agenda, and I will read it. It is as follows. Approval of minutes of the June twenty-seventh, twenty-two meeting. Approval of bills and claims. We have licenses and permits. There is just one tonight. A renewal of a Class C liquor license. Thanks for being here, everybody. Class C liquor license and outdoor service for the hourglass. And then we also have the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three funding agreement resolutions. This is in response to, you know, what we found in the audit that we've got to have agreements with some of these, we call them nonprofits. But one is from the Animal Rescue League. The other one is Council of Governments Housing, Region Twelve. Highway Thirty Coalition is the other one, and those are in our packets. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So much.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve tonight's consent agenda. Roll call, please.
Base, yes. Dirks?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Board and Arrow?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Perfect, thank you. Item number five is oral requests and communications from the audience. Members of the public wishing to address the council. The president tonight may address the council if you wish. This is for any item that is not on tonight's agenda. Are there any? Do we have one? Sure, you want to approach the council here, please, and name and address, please.
My name is Jamie Nealon. This is my brother Rob Nealon. Our father is Jim Nealon. His wife is Pam Nealon. Our mother is in very deep throes of...
Alzheimer's and dementia.
Dementia. Thank you. That's what the word is.
We are, we currently own a apartment building here in town, four oh eight West Seventh Street. And the city is trying to take it from us. And...
The city has tried to take it from us once before. We met the, we met the described needs. And now we're getting letters again that within a week or two, there's, within maybe two weeks, there's going to be another hearing for the city to take it from us.
And we were relying on selling that, which we've had bids on, but they keep getting shut down by the city.
We've had four potential buyers that we know of for sure. And every time we get approached by a buyer, something gets derailed. And every buyer tells us it's getting derailed by the city. And we're just trying to understand this.
We're trying to get the money so we can put our mother in a care facility. That's why we're trying to sell.
Well, that's not the only reason. What do you think? I see a lot of blank stares. Somebody fucking... Okay, yeah, stop. We've, we've, we've met the city's criteria. I'm getting, our dad, our dad is older. He is, he is older. And he did receive multiple letters from the city initially. And the only way we knew this was all going on was because I was offered a word. I went out and got the mail and I seen the next letter from the city saying, "It's getting bad. You need to do something." So there were multiple letters, yes. I admit there were multiple letters sent beforehand. And I don't know what to, I didn't know what to... I didn't know what to say. I didn't know how to respond. Listen, you've obviously received many, many letters beforehand. The only reason I knew this was going on was because I just happened to take a day off and intercept the mail back. I never had the opportunity to see the mail beforehand to find out this was going on. So we find out the city's going to take it from us. We hire a lawyer. The city says this needs to happen. We met that criteria. We met that criteria one hundred percent. And, and then we find out we're getting law, we're getting letters from the city again that you have not managed to sell it. However, I must say, we've tried to sell it four to five times and it's been derailed every time by somebody. Somebody has derailed it. Every potential buyer that we've had was willing to go forward. And something keeps changing every time.
Mike, can I just, can I ask if he's looking for somebody else to talk? I only seen one person come forward to us, so...
And I certainly can't speak to four. I know we had an individual, and I'd have to go back and really look at my notes, that was out of California that was looking to purchase it.
Yes, yes, sir. That was, that was our first potential buyer.
Yep.
But we've had three since.
Yep, and I, and I can't speak to all, to three of them.
But each, each time it got derailed.
Yep. So, you know, I can speak...
And when we asked that potential buyer why it got derailed, they said the city talked them out of it in some way, shape, or form. I don't know how that happens. I really don't. I know it's crooked. I know it's crooked.
Go ahead.
Well, I mean, I'm not going to be accused in a open meeting.
I'm not accusing.
So, I mean, I would, I would say at this point, we have a court date.
I'm not accusing anybody. I'm not accusing anybody of anything. I'm just saying.
Again, I, I'm not...
We got put in, we got, my, my, my parents' property got taken from them and put in a fucking corner.
Sir, sir, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna have, this, this, it's actually, it's listed to five minutes, and particularly when profanity starts, then that's where we end.
You're correct, I'm sorry.
And, and we've heard your point. It is in the courts. The courts will decide the appropriate disposition of it. You know, if, why any of this would be directed just at the city manager also is not appropriate because this is a council decision, okay? And I've been in office as, three of those others have been in since six months. I only know of one that approached us about two months back and just didn't, you know, meet, didn't satisfy the questions that we had. Now, it is under legal means right now, and we'll have to see how it goes. I don't think there's anybody up here that wants to strip your family of any proceeds from a sale from that, and I think we're sensitive to that as well. So its disposition will all be based on its merit. And we hope and believe that we'll come to a peaceful and sound resolution for your family. Is there anything else anybody else would like to add? Or would Dave, our city attorney is online, unable to join us, but if there's anybody else has anything to add. We, we have noted in our minutes that you have approached us and stated your concerns. Thank you.
If I sit down and take a break and come back up, can I get another five minutes?
No, sir. No, no.
Because I got another five minutes of skewing to do.
Well, you...
I'm not very happy with the situation.
Then what I suggest you do is you get on the agenda for two weeks from now.
Okay.
Is that correct? I mean, you can.
Me could.
Yeah. It's, but it's, it's in the courts right now, so...
That, that's where it should be, Mark, not in two weeks.
Okay, yeah, okay.
I believe that's was the decision of the council.
It's in, it's in the courts right now, so...
That was how we decided.
My five minutes is done.
Okay. All right, very good. Points made and taken.
Thank you.
We have no ordinances tonight, no resolutions, but we do have item number eight under reports. We have a housing incentive discussion that we're all anxious to hear. So Mike, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mark and council. Certainly, housing has been a discussion area that we've had for a number of years here at the city. And, you know, we've taken a number of steps to try to encourage housing. Some of those go back, actually prior to my arrival here at the city of Carroll. Some of it started as early as a housing study the CADC put together. And really, up to this point, we have seen really little housing, new housing developed, even with a lot of the work that's been done to really show the need of additional housing in the community. And certainly, this is a complex issue, and there's no easy solution to the housing challenge we have. Now, tonight I'm going to present a few different ideas and options that they could be considered by the council. Certainly, by no means are these the only solutions. And I think we're all open to that, the discussion of how we, we move forward. On the area of incentive, historically, the city has provided very little in the way of direct incentive to encourage new housing starts. It's really relied on private development and builders to provide new lots and infrastructure for those lots and then the housing themselves. And the city hasn't done much in this area. Now, certainly, that's a model that a lot of larger communities around the state and Carroll has enjoyed, but it, it is a little unusual for communities in west central Iowa, especially in the rural nature that we are in, to, to do. And you see a lot more in the way of housing incentives. So the question for the council is how do we address this issue? And there are a lot of factors at play. But after discussion with a lot of stakeholder meetings we've had over the last probably good year, year and a half, it, it's really, I think, become evident that some level of incentive, and particularly directed towards builders, is needed to address this housing issue. Now, while tax increment financing is really the best tool for lot development directed towards builders, this is really kind of an issue with the existing lots that we have on, on the market. And it really becomes problematic. So how do we burn through kind of those existing lots? There is, one area that we've had a lot of discussion of is what, what level of incentive would it take? And based on those discussions, I think it's really suggested that it would take about a fifteen to twenty thousand dollar per residential lot home to really spur additional housing starts, and particularly in the speculative housing market, which I think we, we, we do need in the, in the community. So the question is how do we burn through those existing lots? And what are our existing neighborhoods we have? And how do we work through that? So kind of first starting with the Rolling Hills Development area. There are existing twelve lots in this area. Additionally, the developer has a five point eight acre parcel of land that could develop an additional twenty lots for a total of thirty-two when you combine that with the existing twelve. Because they have existing lots and Seven Oh Four Development Corporation is looking to develop that additional land, using TIF in this instance for the developer to develop that land would be a likely tool. So if you did provide a fifteen thousand dollar, for example, incentive for the new and existing lots, in that case, you'd be looking at a total incentive of four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Now, this would be generated... This would be generated through tax increment financing. So if you didn't have new housing starts and new development occur, the city would not be out anything because it would be through a TIF rebate scenario like we've done with other housing start developments. Now additionally, I think a consideration to receive the full incentive that should be placed on the developer would be to set a minimum number of units that we'd want to see built every year to, to get that incentive. And you would want to look at somewhere between five and ten houses per year in that development. Now, that would be an area that we'd need to negotiate. But this, from that approach to get those twelve lots developed out would be likely the easiest and less risk for the city because we're not putting a cash outlay with those lots. Any questions on that initial? So moving on, you have the Northridge Development, Roman Steffes and Sons Construction. There are currently thirty lots available in that subdivision that are developed. Now, Roman Steffes Development has no plans to develop at this time any additional lots or any additional development. So for that development, you would need to look at some type of strategy that'd be outside of tax increment financing to, to fund development in those lots. For that, one idea would be to purchase the lots from the developer and then sell them to a developer that would actually, or a builder that would actually build on those at a discount. Now during, due to state statute requirements, one suggestion would be to use our private development corporation, CADC, to actually make the actual land purchase and then sell those lots to the final home builder. Additionally, as CADC holds those lots, they would have no, like, interest costs. They can hold those for the developers' benefit. And so they would have a lower ongoing cost because they would not have an interest cost for those lot purchases. Additionally, the developer has agreed, if the city would consider an option like this, to provide a discount in the Northridge Development if a minimum of ten lots would be purchased. So that would result in some savings. So as an example, a lot that retails for fifty-eight thousand dollars today, the developers offered a bulk price to the city of purchasing at least ten lots at fifty-five thousand dollars or three thousand dollar discount. Then if CADC would hold those lots, then the, the developer would have an additional benefit in not paying interest and assuming a five percent interest for six months. That would provide additional interest savings of one thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. So based on that discount and the savings, that'd be four thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Then additionally, if the lot would ultimately be sold to the builder at that forty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-five thousand would be the suggested price, that would be discounting it by an additional ten thousand, six twenty-five for a total incentive of fifteen thousand dollars. Does that make sense? I know there's a lot of numbers in there and some sort of traction, but hopefully that makes sense. Now, it would be suggested to receive the builder discount that the city considered to provide five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in ARPA funds to make an initial purchase of ten lots to receive the proposed discount. Now, I did provide, and Laura will put up on the screen, I did have a, a small error in, in the staff report. But ultimately, if all thirty lots would be purchased under this arrangement and you would provide both the discount and interest savings and then provide a total incentive of fifteen thousand dollars per lot, I had in the staff report the ultimate cost would be three hundred and ten thousand roughly. The actual number is three hundred and forty-one thousand, sixty dollars. Now, some of the lots, as you will see on there, the developer's offering a discount. Some of the lots, they're not offering a discount. And that's just some of the more desirable lots they've offered. They, they are not offering a discount on those. Now, certainly, I'm not proposing we go out and purchase thirty lots today. And certainly, we may not get through thirty lots ultimately through this program. If the council would use ARPA funds, one suggestion would be that any of the lots that are not sold or purchased by September first of twenty twenty-four, sold or purchased by September first of twenty twenty-four. So we'd have to time all this out, that the remaining funds would come back to the city by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, so we can reobligate them under the rules of ARPA. And additionally, the city would have to expend the ARPA funds by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six to meet the regulations under the ARPA program.
So one real quick question, Mike. So in this, just thinking, so we're purchasing these lots, CADC holds them, they're resold. CADC is recouping the money. Are they going to continue to buy more lots for future development down the road and say until that money's gone or out?
I think after the initial ten, we wouldn't necessarily go out and purchase additional lots unless we knew we had a developer or a builder that was, was planning to build. And one comment, I didn't, I didn't explain this earlier, is I think as CADC enters into kind of purchase agreements with these builders, they'll hold it during construction period and then sell it. There is going to be some requirements that the, the builder would build that house within a set period of time. Because, you know, we don't want those lots to sit there vacant. We, we wouldn't want to be in a scenario where we have a builder come forward, "Hey, I'll buy ten lots for you, from you." We, we sell all ten and they never come and build on those. So, you know, we want to have timelines that are very specific, you know, very doable with a, with a builder, but, but are set so that we're getting the development we want to see.
So this is going to be first come, first served basis? Is it going to be limited to just local contractors? Or is this open to somebody on the outside? "I want to come here and put a spec house and put it on the market for sale." Just so people know, hey, you have a short window here. Time is the essence. We're, we're looking to get aggressive on this to have something done.
Yep. Great question. And what I, what I've always told, and we had some conversation with local builders. We had some meetings and talked to the builder community in Carroll. What I've told them is local first. You know, we want our local builders to, to be, succeed and be part of this program. But certainly, if we can't get the housing starts that we need in the community, we may need to look out elsewhere. And I think, you know, if the council, if this is the direction the council wants to go, yes, we're going to get it out there. The, the local builder's going to hear it first, but then we're going to get it out there in the larger community around the state to understand. So that the builders know that we have this program and incentive out there.
Mike, based on the experience of Manning a few years ago, they had a builder come in. They had to guarantee five homes, economies of scale. What if a builder came in and said, "Okay, our, our deadline is..." The builder would have twelve months to build a home on a lot. What if the builder came in and said, "I'm buying five lots to save money, similar footprints, again, to save money, efficiency, and speed up the process." Would they have twelve months for each of those lots? Or how would that work? Would, would we just work it out with them to... I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I think the idea would be we'd work with the, the builder. And, and they're going to be given timelines and it'd be, you know, whenever you commit to that purchase, it's twelve months if you buy one or buy five or buy ten. You know, you're, you, you don't get ten years to build ten lots. You get one year to build ten if that's what you want to do.
Okay, so, okay, so one year for all the homes on those five lots?
Yep.
That would be it?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That was it, okay.
Good question.
Have you given any thought to a timeline on how long the locals would have an opportunity first before you went out, or is it all right away?
You know, I, I think by, by this meeting and having this discussion, I mean, if the council says this is the direction we're going to go, you know, it's going to get out in local media. It's going to take us a little bit of time to get some mechanics put together. We would be back at the next council meeting again, so they're going to have a little bit of a head start. But I, you know, we had builder meetings, and I think what we heard was there's a capacity issue of really what they can build for what, for what we need. You know, some of the work CADC did through the housing study with RDG, you know, we need thirty-five to forty houses built every single year in Carroll to meet the need and demand we have, what our employers need in the community to succeed. That's what we're hearing. So we know that that's a number we need. The, the capacity in our local builders, to be honest, is, is probably more like ten to fifteen a year. And so, yes, we want our locals to, they're going to get every shot on the opportunity, but, you know, unless council wants to set an arbitrary date, what I would say is we'll get it out to the locals first and then we'll start getting it out to other builders shortly after that.
By local, do we mean Carroll only or the county? Or what, what do we mean by local?
I just think people that typically built in the Carroll community. And it's not just in the city of Carroll.
Okay.
I, I guess I would like to see a timeline on it, whether it's a three-month or six-month period from the date that we set something in stone, just so people start moving on something. Just because there's a timeline, if those funds aren't allocated, then they're, you know, they're brought back, so...
You're talking about a timeline of...
They must act.
Yes, local, local contractor builders must move three to six months. If they're still out there, they're still open to them, but then somebody from the outside is able to come in as well. Obviously, open them up first, but not have a year on it or, you know, shorten it down, create some urgency there.
Yeah. Okay.
Mike, my only question would be, since we're talking about this right now and you're in the heat of the summer, and this were to come back and we were to move forward, if you're only giving a contractor a year, you're asking them to work in the nastiest of Iowa weather. So, you know what I mean? Like, they can probably get something going, but they might not be able to get things closed up in order to get something finished. So do you mean finished within a year? Or I think we need to talk about that as well.
Yeah, the idea would be from, from when they commit to saying, "Yep, we're going to build on this lot," it's one calendar year from that point.
Yeah, it's going to be pretty hard to do with the weather being, we're, we're in... Yeah, it's going to be pretty hard to do with the weather being, we're in the middle of summer right now. I mean.
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly look at timelines, but even now, if you, you know, starting in the spring, a lot of contractors can still build a house. You know, we're not going to get this program out till August. So, I mean, you put your footing in April, May, you can, you can build a house that fast if you decide you want to build a house that fast.
Okay.
I thought the same thing, Misty, I did, you know, to an extent that, you know, and then supply issues and things like that. And then I think the council needs to also decide what does done mean.
Exactly. That's, I mean, I've been waiting on electricians and plumbers for months on just a remodel. So, a brand new.
No, I think it's a fair question to bring up, certainly.
Yeah.
I think it just depends on when you go out with it and then what, yeah, what you mean by finish.
Yeah. And we certainly, I mean, you look up at the Rolling Hills. I mean, that's a good one that I've watched because they have a development incentive. So I've been a little bit more involved in it. But, you know, we had basements even this last November go in. And, you know, they finished those houses by, they were, they were done and occupied by May of this year. So, you know, if you get that.
Different group of builders, though.
But if you get that footing in, in, yet this fall, a lot of builders can get that up and framed up and closed over the winter and construction can, can continue. The big thing is getting the footing in.
I guess my concern, kind of to Misty, or to Carolyn's point was if they buy 10 lots, I mean, we're expecting them to put 10 houses up in that, that year. I mean, and you're telling me that you think that 10 houses could be put up by?
I think it's avoided so 10, one person can buy 10 lots is the thing, opening up to multiple people.
Yeah. And I think, I think the, you know, you're going to have to have the capacity to build 10 lots or five lots. You know, if you're going to get a local contractor and they just build one or two houses a year, for them to come in and think they can take on five to 10 houses, that's not realistic. Now, like to Carolyn's point, American Classic Homes was the company that went to Manning. You know, they have the capacity and the wherewithal where they, yeah, they went in and they built five houses in a very short period of time. So it's just about, do you have that employee force behind you to be able to do that? It's doable if you have the mechanics.
It depends on the house. Like up in Spencer, they're doing a large housing project up there and it's a local contractor, local subcontractors. They're intent, they just started, but it's going to be slab on grade homes. And they call them affordable but high quality homes. They're going to build 56 homes. It's like a planned community, kind of a community within a community. They intend to build 56 homes by 2020, the end of 2024. They're being very aggressive. But, I mean, you know, I, we have to have something reasonable. So because of the deadline, to attract people and get started. And hopefully it'll fly.
Going in Storm Lake right now and there's like 20 duplexes going up and they look at getting them all done in one year. So there's companies out there that can do that.
Yeah, just not our locals.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's kind of been proven our local can't get the demand that we want.
Yeah. Now, historically, our locals, we've had local contractors that have been able to do that. It may not be a current situation, but we've had that capacity.
And Mike, remind me, the zoning, what is allowed to be built? Like duplexes, condo, single family?
In Northridge, they can do duplexes. They could do single family or duplexes.
So how much of the ARPA funds are you looking at for this housing incentive on this type of program?
Well, I mean, that's ultimately a decision for council. And, and, you know, let's continue and talk about some of the other mechanics before we get into that. Because, but that's, that is ultimately an answer, that's a policy decision we need direction from council from. Is there anything on the Northridge in particular we want to hit?
You know, I just, just real quick before this afternoon, I went and looked at a lot of those, you know, addresses up there. Because I wanted to see how close your $300,000 example was and it's pretty spot on. You did a lot of homework on that because it's, actually, it could be a little north of that in fact. So I think, I think the payback part that he's got illustrated in here is quite realistic. And nine years is a pretty decent, sound return on investment, I think, so.
And I'll jump to that because you just hit that. But, you know, I did provide some information in the staff report that talked about the city's return on investment. And, you know, as we provide this, you know, we really, I think it's an important consideration. Now, a $300,000 home, as Mark indicated, you know, to, to receive $15,000 back, it would take about nine years to regain that expense. Now, if you went up to 20, or $20,000, it would take about 12 years. Now, we did account for, and if you're thinking the math there, we did account for some tax abatement. If you know, we do provide tax abatement for the first five years on any new valuation that's created on the first $75,000 of value. So that's been accounted in the return on investment, but it is a consideration. You know, if these houses don't get built, you know, you're getting no new value. Where if you do create either of these programs for the first example in Rolling Hills where you're providing that TIF or in the Northridge development, providing ARPA funds, you know, that's your ROI, nine to 12 years. One other development that was been pointed out that included in the staff report was Timber Creek. And, you know, while we know Rolling Hills and Timber Creek is really more from our workforce, housing neighborhoods, Timber Creek does target a higher income. And really at that price point, you're not likely to see people or builders go out and do speculative homes in those neighborhoods. Those are likely to be custom homes that are built by decisions made by homeowners or future homeowners. So in those cases, incentives directed to the builder are less likely to be effective. And so you'd really need to look at like tax abatement to be an effective tool to encourage the homeowner. Now, the city could provide up to a 10-year, 100% tax abatement. There would be some mechanics we'd have to work through. And while there may be some desire to provide incentives at all levels, I think really staff's position and our suggestion, really talking with builders and what's happening is for the Timber Creek development, we would advise avoiding that at this point. But this could be something that could be considered and revisited later if we don't see any development down there and the council later wants to look at that.
So with that, Mike, is that something that could be put in to start with for the, say, for two years and then taken out and see what kind of action or activity starts down there? You know, say it blows up, you obviously don't want to have that forever. But if it starts creating some activity, opening up some of the higher end houses may open up some of the, you know, middle range houses for people as well that are wanting to move up.
Absolutely. And that certainly is a strategy that could be used. Again, you know, you create a urban revitalization district and then put a limitation in there of how long that's good for. And that creates that urgency factor. So that's certainly a direction the council could look at. And unlike the other two, I mean, there's no cash outlay. It's really just that tax abatement component. Another thing, and I'm just going to spur because I've heard it being discussed is, you know, there's certainly other lots than the three developments that I just listed out. There is some infill lots out in the community. And those get a little bit more difficult. I think, again, there's, this is a strategy of what are we trying to target? What are we trying to create? And again, we've heard the builders is the issue. And so that's where we've put the incentive behind the builders. Now, you certainly could look at doing just a direct incentive. You know, create a new housing start on the existing lot and there'll be an incentive provided for that. It has to be tied to jobs. So again, the builder building a house creates those jobs. So it would be the incentive direction. And so you could look at doing that. Again, I would, I would, I think the cautionary note, I think in that direction would be set your, how much do you want to give? Similar to the Northridge discussion we had of, okay, we're going to buy so many lots. We're going to put this much money in. You know, this is our target, what we want to try to incentivize. You know, set the dollar amount for those infill lots. And that would then hopefully create that urgency that people would then consider doing something on there. You could step back with, away from Northridge altogether and say, you know what? We're just going to do direct incentives all the way across. Doesn't matter if it's in Northridge or some other neighborhood. Now, Rolling Hills is kind of the anomaly. The best tool down there again is TIF. And since the developer wants to build a different, additional lots, that's how we can leverage and have less risk for the city. Because again, if you don't see new development, we don't need to get in the incentive game then. Or there's going to be no TIF to rebate back to the developer if you don't create additional value. So that's another consideration out there.
How much latitude do we have, Mike, in choosing the lots we would purchase? Because they are different size.
In Northridge, we'd have, they would let us pick any of the lots. Now, obviously, there's, there's a price.
Yes.
And they vary.
Right.
And in fact.
Is that based on lot size or corner lots or?
There's, there's different factors. But, you know, the, the prices that have been offered for us is anywhere from $49,000 to $61,000. So, you know, that's the, you know, you pick what you want, but there's a price on the.
Right.
And the 61s not discounted, correct?
Correct. Yeah.
So with 704 Development doing the TIF, you know, with appreciation, values continue to rise. You know, even looking at some of these lots in Northridge, what they've done over the last couple of years, which they have rose up. If the city would do a TIF option for the new development in Rolling Hills, is there a way that a maximum price on this, that they're going to be on these lots?
We certainly can have those discussions. I mean, part of the, you know, you know, part of the incentive for the developers to get them built as quickly as they want, as they can. Because if you don't build sufficient lots to generate the increment to rebate, they're never going to realize the total incentive. So, you know, they're going to need to build those at a certain pace. Now, certainly, there's also holding costs. You know, if the first lot gets built next year and the last lot gets built five years from now, there's going to be a certain holding cost that the developer is going to have during that time. Because you're not going to, again, generate all the incentive day one. It's going to be spread out over 10 years. And so they're going to have carrying costs and holding costs that they're going to have to. So there's probably going to be some incremental annual increase in that lot price that's going to need to be had. The other balancing act is, again, is who are we, who are we trying to incentivize? The builder or the homeowner? I know there's been some discussion about that of, well, if we give a $15,000 incentive to the developer, how much of that comes back to the homeowner? And that's a hard thing because, again, if we're trying to get the builder to come to Carroll, build a house, build at a certain rate and timeline, the builder needs that incentive to do that, where the homeowner just needs the house in the end. And so I know there's been a lot of discussion of, well, we want to see the incentive go ultimately also to the homeowner. Well, their incentive is there's a house for them to move in. Could be one way you look at it.
Well, and we have lost people because they couldn't find a home in Carroll. So they negated the contract.
You know, to your point, Mike, too, I thought about that, you know, whether you're incentivizing, who you're actually incentivizing. And, you know, I, I think, I think the risk that a developer is taking on is going to pretty well take care of that. You know, they're going to want to move them, particularly if they're hung up for 10 lots or five or even one for that matter. I think, you know, with rising interest rates the way they are right now, I think that that'll pretty well take care of itself. You know, they're going to want to move them, you know, pretty quick and they'll set the price accordingly.
Well, even if they do only one at a time, we're not offering this forever, too.
Right.
So they've got to, the faster they can turn them over, the more chances they're going to be involved in this program.
First come, first served.
Yes.
And additionally, if we use ARPA funds, if that's our funding source, there is a limited amount of time we can run this program for. So there will be some urgency from that perspective.
Well, that's what I was just figuring out here. If 341 does 30 lots, if you're going to use all the ARPA funds, you've got four cycles to go through and you don't have the time to do four cycles before ARPA funds can be used. So you either have to, if you're going to use more of the ARPA funds, you've got to increase this house number from 30 to more or you've got to figure out how to get this incentivized going two times at, twice at one time. Because you got, you got five different sections, five different flips on this.
But I think ultimately what you have to look at is, you know, if you can get the 10 houses committed and they're being, they're under construction, you know, there's, at that point, you know, does the city make more investment? Because you know you're going to get the funds back.
Right, right.
So you may have to run some concurrent cycles through there. But, but again, we're not going to want to go out and buy a ton of lots speculatively without knowing we have builders.
After offer this and nobody bites on it, then it didn't work. You know, we've done our share.
Right.
But if there's a lot, a lot of people that are incentivized on this, you've got five cycles of this. You know, you're just showing one cycle now. We can run two cycles at a time if the, if the people are there that want to do it.
I got a point, well, point Mike put quite eloquently to me was my concern over sustainability. You know, we're going to, you know, this thing is going to run its course, you know? Even if it's successful, it's going to run its course. And, but if we sell these existing lots and burn through that inventory, then we've got TIF. We at least have TIF.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
And so.
But I'm talking ARPA funds only.
Correct, yeah. I hope that's the problem that we have.
Yeah.
You know, but.
And I think through the ARPA funds, to be honest, I don't think we'll be able to burn through all these lots. I could be surprised. But I think, I think ultimately, if we can get half of them done, that's better, that puts us in a better position.
Yeah, right.
And, you know, so what's the ultimate cost to the city through ARPA? I don't think it's 341. I think it's probably half of that number. You know, so that's how I view it. Now, we'll see what happens and maybe this is enough to move it and we burn through all 30 in a year.
So these infill lots, you know, I look at a couple of them, Oakwood, Edgewood Drive. There's, there's some, one of them in particular, there's a guy that's held two lots for over 20 years that has no development on it. So is that something that C E D C would purchase? It's a lower dollar lot to be able to offer to somebody to build on it. You know, typically what I've seen up there, lots have been selling for $25,000, give or take a little bit. If you're given a $15,000 incentive to a builder, you know, they've got a much less investment, less dollar investment in that purchase. Where, quite frankly, I think once you get one of these going or moving and it's going to open the eyes to other people, so.
Yeah. I think certainly that could be an approach where we go buy those lots. I think reality is, we look at a direct cash incentive in that case. But I think either approach works. You know, the balancing act is how much land do we want to buy and hold? Like I started out.
Yeah.
There's no silver bullet or magic answer in any of this.
We could be making changes in these decisions as we go.
I think we will. But I think we've also been talking about it for a very long period of time.
It's time to roll.
So I had a probably a 45 minute conversation with a gentleman on the phone who owns two lots on Oakwood. And cash flow comes down to it with pretty much any business. You know, time for him to cash flow, taking his guys off of a normal job where he's got revenue coming in to make payroll versus having the upfront cost. With the conversation I had, I feel if something's done with the infill lot, especially the two that he owns, just for example, I think it would push him to start on it probably this year versus, you know, he already owns it. Why not sit on it for next four or five years?
Does he want to develop it?
Yeah.
I mean, A, he's got the desire to?
Yep. So. And he's built some duplexes for Greta Mans and, and Rolling Hills.
What are those lot prices? Do you even know?
I paid, I think they came out to be like $21,000 apiece.
Is what he paid?
Is what he paid for them.
But I mean, what does he want? You don't know?
No.
Okay.
So.
Because I think that would impact.
Look, roughly, roughly, guess what? He's, he's saying it's a house that's going to be selling for $275,000 to $300,000.
Okay. Because again, it would impact the amount of incentive that, you know, we place on it. And it takes. And, and it takes me kind of the next question I have for the council is, are you comfortable with fifteen thousand? You know, as a starting place and hopefully that gets things done? Or do you think that's not enough or do you think that's too much?
I personally think you get more aggressive to get things moving. You can always pull back a little bit.
So you think fifteen thousand, i- i- is fifteen thousand enough to get it moving? I mean, it's.
And that's incentivizing the builder, right?
Well, it's actually two different, what, for the existing lots, it incentivizes the, the builder. But for, you know, the, the lots further develop, the developer. Ultimately, we hope it benefits the owner eventually, which ultimately is going to benefit our tax base.
Honestly, I think you do twenty grand to start and you can pull it back in two years. See what it does for you.
So I went to interview the bunch of contractors that are basically remodeling right now. And COVID started all that. And I asked him, I said, what would it take to stop remodeling and start building spec homes? And I got the number fifteen to twenty thousand.
Yeah, the two that I talked to said fifteen. But again, I don't know if that's an offer on the table either. I think fifteen thousand's enough, but I, I certainly want, I want to influence what you guys thought, think, but it's a pretty healthy incentive.
And you're saying our only funding source for this right now would be ARPA?
You know, there's certainly a lot of different funding sources you can use. Um, you certainly could use general fund. Um, you could use local option sales tax. I think ARPA feels more comfortable. Um, simply it is, it's one-time funds. You know, I think we've said historically, we want to do something that's kind of impactful and transformative for the community. Um, and, you know, jump-starting housing certainly has that potential to do that. But, you know, certainly there's a lot of flexibility in different funding sources the council could, could consider.
And a year ago, we couldn't use ARPA. I mean, the, the, the rules changed.
There was rule changes that allowed ARPA to be used. I, I'm going to talk about that. The, the other thing I want to talk a little bit through is, um, as we've been developing, as we've had a series of conversations. And in one conversation I've had, uh, so far with four of the five community banks in Carroll, is, is looking at, talking through this issue. Um, and having conversations about it. And certainly they have all, the, of the four of the five, and the fifth one I'm going to have, um, we've had a lot of discussions on housing. So I know he shares, uh, they share that critically, it's a critical issue in Carroll, but that, that's how they phrased it. Housing is critical. There, there's a real lack of housing and they, they feel that they need to, to get involved in housing with the city. Uh, so one of the things that we are talking with the community banks about is setting up a program where we would, um, they would actually invest, uh, each community bank. And they asked so far, it's been ten thousand from each of them, uh, so fifty thousand dollars to set up a fund. And then this is similar to a program that we've seen in Orange City that was pretty successful in kind of spurring new, uh, speculative homes in the community. And that's where they would, um, basically set up a fund that if a spec home didn't, was built, completed and didn't sell within the first six months. This fund then would carry the interest cost for the next six months. Um, and in Orange City's case, it's, has developed, uh, a number of spec homes were built. Um, and to date, they have never spent a penny of interest or had to cover a penny of interest. Uh, so the idea is get this fund set up so it can be guaranteed, it'd actually be managed by CDC. We'd set up some program parameters. Um, but the, the idea is there's this fund to, to, to move housing. Now, we're looking at other, also other private investments in this area. Uh, too early to talk about those, but this is one that we're, uh, getting close to being able to put together. Uh, so this is not just a city kind of initiative, but we're looking for other partners that can also step up and help in unique areas to, to move, uh, housing starts.
So if there was some interest from, you know, a realtor saying, oh, discount or a lumberyarder, what's their step? How do they bring up their incentives to us now?
Certainly, call me, we'll talk about it.
All right.
I mean, I think we want to look at.
But how will the people that are looking at buying this, where, where are they going to go? CDC?
Some of it, some of it, which is how we market it. Um, you know, you look at like Newton has a program where, you know, they're, they're doing, uh, the, the Newton welcome package. And, you know, it's on their development corp, it's on the city's website. You know, the city's website probably tracks more traffic, so it becomes, it's just how we market it. Doesn't matter who manages it, we're just marketing it together.
To LaBurn's question, we would, the city wouldn't need to be in a position to underwrite any of those additional outlier incentives in any way. It's just, we just help market it.
We're just marketing it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. Yeah, it could just get cumbersome if not, you know, but, yeah, or if so.
I was comfortable with fifteen, but looking back over the information and the deadline of expending the funds by the end of December twenty twenty-six. I think we are going, I, I agree with Kyle. I think we should be more aggressive. We're in competition with other towns for builders. And it, I think it's worth a try going to the twenty thousand incentive and, uh, for these ten lots. Even though it takes a little longer to get a return on the money, we're building our tax base. We're potentially adding workers to businesses here in town who are losing, uh, qualified workers. And when you think long-term, I think bumping it up five thousand, it's, it's worth being aggressive that way. So thanks, Kyle, for helping me think it, think about it a little differently.
Why did you make the comment about just for these ten lots?
No, for. The thirty are for the, we're buying ten, let's try it at these ten. Or were you thinking all thirty? I.
I think, I think you do it till the money's out.
Till the money's out.
You get aggressive to start with. Start getting then the results you want. I mean, you're going to know if it's the results in a year, what kind of action's been on it.
That's assuming you have no other use for the balance of the ARPA fund.
Right, that's, that would be my concern.
Which we're down to what, about eight hundred now? At nine hundred roughly?
Oh, we.
Well, we had one point four.
We have one point four.
And then we use some at the ballpark. And then we, we use some at the, uh, rec center.
Yes.
And so aren't we down to eight or nine hundred now?
I thought the ballpark was, I thought the ballpark was a hundred thousand.
Hundred or a hundred and a half.
Right around a hundred thousand.
Hundred and a half?
We started with one point four.
Seventy-two, I thought.
Oh, no, we're.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
I was thinking it was.
Okay.
You're at one point two, yeah.
Okay.
Was our intention at some point to use some of those ARPA funds for street repairs or Adam Street?
Or waterworks?
Or water or wastewater?
I mean, those are policy decisions for the council to make.
We get it.
Um, and there, there's certainly, um, legal uses for those funds. You know, the cautionary note is if, what I would always say with streets is in particular, is we need to fund a street program, not on one-time funds. And so I know there's going to be some hard decisions on Adam Street. And what I would hate to, to see the council do is make a policy decision on Adam Street using one-time funds. And then three years from now, we're making decisions without those one-time funds there. And I know there's been some discussion, well, let's, let's do like the underground utilities, that's the homeowner's responsibility with ARPA funds. Well, they're not going to be there three years from now. And so that's the concern I have with, with using ARPA funds on Adam Street. When you look at the water and wastewater, those are enterprise funds. We've always operated them on a, you know, cash flow basis, basically like a business, uh, with those. We've set our rates with, in particular with sewer, knowing we have some major projects coming up. So we've been saving dollars basi- on the side, knowing that we're going to have a big construction cost that will, will pay down some of that construction cost initially. And then with our rate we have in place, we're going to be able to pay for those construction costs and the debt service that it's going to incur and create. Uh, and so that, that's how I would suggest we go there. Now, certainly there's ARPA funds left because we still haven't figured out, um, or, or made a decision on, uh, any of the ARPA fund use. Uh, but those are kind of my cautionary notes on, um, putting them in those type of uses.
I, I mean, I don't disagree with Kyle that we should be a little aggressive and try to, to, to do something.
I just look at it now.
For me, like, if we're just planning on spending, i- if it goes well and then just dump the rest of it in there. I mean, we're expending all those ARPA funds. If something does come up where those are available, they're no longer available.
And, and if I can chime in, I agree with you. I, I would limit the amount of ARPA funds. And I think that creates some urgency, so you can go aggressive, but I would make a hard cap of saying, this is at least initially how much we're going to spend on ARPA funds towards this program. And then if, if six months comes back and we're saying, hey, we're out, then the council can make a decision on where to head there. But I wouldn't just make it unlimited, because I do think there's some ways we could spend the money yet. Because I think there, it's a transformative opportunity for the city that I, I, I would hate to say this is all we're going to use it for.
Jean, you have a question? Name and address, please, just for the record.
Carol, um, a couple of questions. I moved into a condo and that vacated a family home. And I, and I, and I commented with those newer developments, don't we have two more developments that we're dealing with? That, that are like in process? Am I wrong about that?
Matt's still building a couple more.
Pardon?
Matt, Matt still has a couple more that he's got the basements done.
No, I meant the ones that were zoned.
Overland Park?
Overland, is that what it's called?
Oh.
They're by the railroad tracks.
Okay.
Yeah, by the railroad tracks. And what about the one over behind, uh, Carroll High, no, Fairview?
That's just annexed is all that. There's no, there's no development planned.
A developer.
It's just been annexed by the city, but it's.
But I mean, those are going to be impacted by this too, aren't they?
Well, yeah, I mean.
They could be. I mean, so let's hit the two. So the Overland Park group, um, that's a, a, um, apartment project. There's forty some.
Thirty-five units.
Is it thirty-five? I had it in my report.
Yeah.
So, so thirty-five units in there. Uh, they are currently in the application process with IFA. And so we'll know this fall if that, that would even be funded. So it may not go forward. So it's very preliminary at this point. They need, they need their financing through Iowa Finance Authority before that'll move forward. Uh, so that's where that is. Then the Lamar Cote property, which is behind New Hope Village, uh, that property, again, it's a hundred and twenty acres. Approximately twenty acres is in flood plain, so it'll never be developed. Uh, the, the remaining hundred is going through a process right now to be, uh, rezoned now. Uh, so he's, he's make, that actually wins data, goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, and it'll go through that rezoning process. Uh, but there is no development, um, submittals for that at this point. He's marketing the prop, property to find a developer to come in and build it. So there, there's nothing, no prospects right now on that property.
So would they be eligible for this money?
Um, well, there's no, um, for any of this that we've talked about? No, because there is no existing lots that are, um, available or built on those. So this program's not set up for that.
We could consider a TIF agreement if it comes to that, you know? I mean, if there's a request made and we weigh it out at that time.
Well, I guess I was just wanting to be sure that you were considering, um, considering, um, smaller apartments similar to what like condos and townhouses? Because they do vacate family homes. That, and that then makes the cost of building these less expensive because they're not family homes. They're not huge places that need to, to house a whole family.
Correct.
And, but they would still have the effect of vacating other homes that would be large enough for, um, family.
Agreed.
And, and, you know, we've had some, and Laura, would you pop my screen on? You know, we've had this discussion with builders and I use this example here. Now, this is out of West Des Moines. And the, it's a town home. Um, this is, uh, Jerry's Home, it's a five-unit building. This takes the space of probably three single-family homes and you're getting five residential units. The price point, you know, they're, they're marketing, you can buy one today between two oh nine and two twenty-four. So when you talk about affordability standpoint, it's certainly a good entry point, especially for first-time home buyers. Now, this is a two-story product. There's certainly one-story products slab-on-grades out there that, uh, I think there's part of the community. There's, there's really no exterior maintenance that occurs. It's all done by a homeowners association. Uh, so I, I think there's a market, uh, for this. And, and these were prices in early twenty twenty-one, so they probably went up. Um, but y- you know, it's still, uh, a, uh, a product that we have been talking about with our local builders. Um, and, you know, I think, I think you're right on.
Well, I know that, um, when I bought mine, they were all sold within a month.
Yeah.
And many people who said, well, golly, I didn't know that was available. So it's something to think about. There's a demand that can also help with the family, uh, properties because they vacate.
We, we've really been talking about, it, it's open for everything right now. Not just any particular thing.
I think one of the things in Carroll in particular is, um, and, and, you know, backup, you know, we, we can have philosophical questions of how we address this. And, and I think those are really important conversations. I mean, I've talked to people, I think the market should really lead housing. I mean, just to my inner core, I think that's the right place. I think we, we have an issue that we're not seeing the housing starts that we need in Carroll. Um, and, and, and that's our dilemma. Historically, we've, we've always relied on developers to go out and develop the lots, build the houses. That's unusual in west central Iowa. And even in Carroll County, you look at other cities in our county, you're seeing the cities are actually doing the development, doing the investment, taking on the risk. And, you know, they can kind of push the town homes probably more, where we're relying on that marketplace to develop, to, we can, we can talk about it, we can. I think the one good thing is, are you, are you living up on Thirtieth now? Um, I didn't know that. I, I guess from what you just, everything you said, I think the success of what's happened up there, the success that's happening down in Rolling Hills. I think some developers are, are saying, hey, there is actually a market for those units, that type of housing. And so I think you're starting to see some interest. And, and I think you'll, I would hope that we start seeing some of that.
That the market would be attracting, uh, builders.
Yeah.
So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Jean.
So I think my goal, what I would really hope we get out of tonight is we're not looking for any formal actions from the council, is really some direction of how the council wants us to proceed. Uh, my intention and hope is in two weeks to bring back a formal program then. Uh, there may be some tweaks at that point, at that council meeting, but we can bring back a formal program then. Do we get the council to either say we hate it still or nope, we're going to buy in and, and, and sign off on it? Uh, and my hope would be early August, we could be, um, marketing a plan out there to try to get people to start, um, moving on some of these lots. Uh, it won't happen overnight. Um, I think for, for builders though, they're starting to plan out even next year on what they want to do, starting in the spring of next year. So I think timing is of essence right now, um, if we want to start moving this. And I think even in more in particular, even for those builders that are outside the Carroll community that may consider to come in this marketplace, they're going to start making those decisions in probably October. So we need to have some things in place so we can have those discussions. So I think the big questions are, what's your thoughts on Rolling Hills? Now, that one's going to take some time to put that deal together, but we can at least start moving on it. And then how do you want to handle, uh, either buying lots in Northridge? Or do we just do a straight infill and just even though they're infill lots, we're just going to do a straight report? Infill incentive for all the lots outside of Rolling Hills? I really would push Rolling Hills to be a TIF driven, simply because that's less risk for the city. That's two different approaches, but it's less risk for the city and it moves. Some of those lots off the market, so I think those are the big questions, so you know, our recommendation is just to provide some direction to staff tonight. Well, thank you.
Can I answer a question with an with a question?
Yeah.
You know, I'm just giving us some thought, you know, whether or not we do, you know, fifteen or twenty thousand dollars or whatever that magic number is, and then this would also include the infill. Which sounds like would be at a lower price point. Without reinventing the wheel, because you've done enough work on this already. But what would the council's reaction to be if we could suggest maybe doing some type of? Formula or incentive based upon the build? You know, whether or not it's going to be a three hundred thousand dollar home or a two hundred fifty thousand dollar home or a four hundred thousand dollar home? Because that would certainly affect the ROI. And I'm just, I'm putting it out there, just a question with a question.
I actually thought about that a month or so ago. A higher percentage incentive for a lower dollar home. Higher the dollar home is, the less of the percentage incentive it is.
Or a higher dollar incentive for a higher dollar home, but it would be essentially the same thing.
Yeah, it'd be percent percentage, so you you're, because there's more, probably more need for the two hundred to four hundred thousand dollar homes than there is. Above that, so you could give a higher percentage of incentive for that class of homes. And then less percentage wise for over that.
Yeah, loo- looking at some of those, you know.
That might be complicated to do, but.
Yeah, some of those values that I looked at today, I mean, there were some two hundred and thirty thousand dollar homes and there was some four hundred and thirty thousand dollar homes. All within a same block. And you know, my thoughts were that, you know, to maybe answer your question more specifically, if we're going to do something in North Ridge. You know, if we could take that incentive and you know, tailor it to what the build would be. And then our TIF discussion with seven oh four. That's that's a whole nother conversation of which, again, I think we're all open to, because we've been doing it matter of fact already. But what what's the council's?
Can I ask a different question?
Yeah.
To maybe spur some of the discussion. I think the question is, you know, you can do it a couple of different ways. We're just going to have a straight incentive, doesn't matter what the value of the house is, probably the least complex. You could take an approach where, if I'm hearing you correctly, we're going to give, you know, if you build a two hundred thousand dollar, if you build a three hundred thou- I'm going to do math easy. You do a two hundred thousand dollar house, we're going to give you twenty thousand bucks or ten percent. If you build a three hundred thousand dollar house, we're going to give you three thirty thousand dollars, is that kind of what you're suggesting?
Well, yeah, because it, you know, the again, the 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 payback, the ROI would be just, you know, it it was part of my argument about Timber Creek.
Yep.
You know, that that he and I had a very healthy discussion about it, of which I lost, but to no surprise. But you know, if you're going to build one eight hundred thousand dollar house, isn't that as good as two four hundred thousand dollar houses? Except it only serves one need, that's that's the downside to it. But but from an ROI perspective, it's the same thing.
And so it's a pure ROI, I mean, the the reverse is, we also know we need workforce housing.
Correct.
And so do you want to drive more of your incentive towards those upper end homes? Or do you just want to say, we don't care, you know, so so we kind of maybe do a percentage where? If you're under two hundred thousand, you're going to get a higher percentage and then it phases out as you, your dollar amount goes up and you get to a certain point, we're not going to provide you any incentive.
Yeah.
Now, you're not getting the ROI at that point, but you are getting the housing unit that you need.
So do the realtors know what the demand is out there, what dollar for your home?
It's it's all levels is what we're being told.
But is there a higher level for a three hundred thousand dollar home than there is a six hundred thousand dollar home? You would think so.
What I would say is.
The housing study showed, you know, it's all across the board, but you know, if a developer is going to come in and build ten homes. He's probably not going to be doing ten six hundred thousand dollar homes.
No.
He's going to be doing. Three hundred thousand dollar.
So it's all about the same.
So the what I'm really going to point out here is. Our average home value, you know, is about this point, is about this dollar amount. But what we're really lacking is, we're we're really lacking upper end homes. You know, this is your affordable spectrum. Now, what's happening is when you're really looking at the houses, like this first house, you know, five eleven West Fifteenth Street. You know, the assessed, the listed price is a hundred and twenty-nine five, well, the assessed value is eighty-seven thirty. So the assessed value is thirty-seven point two percent of the price, the non-courty ratio. And so we're really seeing an imbalance, this should be between ninety-five and one hundred and five percent. And so homes are selling way above what their their assessed value is. And so, yes, we're lacking lower end homes, which is pushing those values up, but we're we're lacking. I think the other thing is you you are experiencing is, I'm seeing a lot of homes that are selling for sale by owner, those upper level, they're selling by. For sale by owner because they don't need a realtor. Just because there's such a demand, so we've seen that in the housing study, if you really look at the housing study. The upper end, it really showed a need in the upper end, showed a need in the lower end too. We, and one of the things that I was going to talk about council and when we talk some, when these incentives really come back. We're going to use some terminology and this is going to be required by our attorneys. That that's really going to talk about that we have a lack of affordable housing. But that lack of affordable housing is not, we're not talking about we need more low income housing, what what state statute? And what the courts have said is you need to make a finding that you lack affordable housing to a price range. So or from a from a home income range. So if I'm making fifty thousand dollars a year, there's no affordable housing for me. If I'm making a hundred thousand dollars a year, there's no affordable housing for me either. And so, you know, that's going to be one thing is that we really lack housing at all price points, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Mike, to go with that, I think our main goal is we need starter homes. Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Approach, please, yeah, we know who you are, but. For those who don't.
Yeah, Kim Keith and Tyler, with your point, we're needing starter homes in town. We don't need four hundred fifty thousand dollar homes. We need, and we keep using this example, and I'm not beating up on the barrels, but what Mr. Bill did, Bureau did years ago with Applewood Knowles was. Starting houses for Carol and look what that's done for Carol. That is, thank goodness we had that back then because that was my first home, this town, so that that's what we need, we need starter homes so. People can come to Carol, my son just sold his house to a doctor coming in for St. Anthony's, you know, it was two forty-two. So that that's the range for it, something like that, so. And a lot of good questions from everybody.
And that's a one level home, no basement.
One level home, no basement, attached garage, but we don't have any homes, so I'm sure it's a lady doctor. They needed a home, so you know what? I told him he it would take him five days to sell it, and I was wrong, it was seven to get it sold. He's a realtor, she did a great job, so, but yeah, that's what we need.
Just to let you clarify something here, we're offering these incentives just for a broad range, we're not selecting the homes.
No.
But that'll be the buyers.
Right.
You know, we can, we can say, yeah, we'd like to have these, but it's the people that select these incentives, it's up to them what they're going to build.
Right, right, but we really need to gear towards the, you know. That Spirit Lake, you everybody's named towns where they've started these new housing complexes. Yes, they all look kind of the same, but you know, that's what we happen to have to get going. You know, they're not going to, everything inside isn't going to be perfect, but our houses are now, because we earned it to get there. But we just need to get these people going, get them to town, get them a house. The city will eventually, like you said, you'll get your money back, because they'll be paying that house, be there for a hundred and some years, so. Plus all the new people we get to town, so thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
Thanks, Kim.
So how do we incentivize the houses that have been on the market? For both of, for the builder and the person that wants to buy it? Can you do the incentive of fifteen thousand for the lot or comparable to, maybe it's only eight thousand per lot and then five year tax payment, so it's both? To get rid of the old, let's just say get rid of the old inventory. Otherwise, I'm afraid if we start new additions, we're going to be sitting there on all the old inventory again without really being aggressive and trying to sell it.
I think.
Do the same thing with cars.
Yeah, I think right now, we're, if we're in a market where. People, if there's a bunch of houses on the market, I think we're in a tax abatement situation then. I think now, a direct incentive to the builder or somebody that's going to put a spec house up. Needs the incentive more than the buyer right now.
For both? We're not missing anything, that tax wasn't there before, that will loosen. It's never existed, this is a twenty thousand dollar lot, all they're doing is paying like four hundred dollars a year in taxes on it, there was no money really lost on it. Once they build on it, then we recoup our money. We start filling them up.
I might have misunderstood your question, but are you suggesting incentivizing the buyers in some way?
Well, just by tax abatement.
Well, it 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 exists, you mean on an existing home?
On new homes.
Oh, on a new home.
The lots that are empty right now that are existing, we have a list of.
We've got the abatement program now.
But it's only up to seventy-five thousand.
Correct, correct.
We're not making for the whole house, it's just being done.
Kind of what we're here talking about.
It's certainly, it's certainly an option. I mean, the council could look at revising its urban revitalization. Plan in in to that, we're looking for correction.
Right, so seventy-five thousand dollars is going to buy your garage.
Yep.
You know, that's, that's what you get tax abatement on.
Yep, the the balancing act and I think what the council needs to consider is, again. I think then we got to look at how we do Rolling Hills, because that probably is going to have to change a little bit. Because you're not, and and that's fine, because it it really doesn't create any more risk for the city. Well.
It doesn't, doesn't.
The tax abatement doesn't do anything for the builder though.
No, I'm saying builder will get an incentive too with the lot.
Oh, you're saying both.
Both. There's people that are sitting out there probably want to build, but there's nothing formed to do it.
He wants a higher.
Oh, okay, yeah, they're getting both, but I guess what I'm, yeah, yeah, to your point, if you if you wanted.
Not spending all the money upfront, we're.
Okay, so what you're.
Kind of helping both sides.
Okay, so say for an example, if you wanted a higher incentive, let's just say for an example, the twenty thousand, you're saying backfill it with. A longer incentive or a better incentive on abatement rather than using the ARPA.
Builder and then tax incentive for the the.
So you're saying doing both ARPA and abatement, right? Is that what you're saying, Tom?
Yeah.
What what I would suggest is, so again, if if you need to bring builders to the table and lower the cost for the builder. And TIF is ultimately your tool that's going to work for that. What what you're going to need to do is, you're probably going to want to do an abatement. If you want to split it fifty fifty, let's say, half to the developer, half to the homeowner. What I would say is doing a ten year tax abatement at fifty percent of the increased value. And then you'll have to do a TIF abatement for the infrastructure costs, I'm thinking of the next development, even like Rolling Hills. Because if you did five years of the abatement upfront, there's no TIF being generated while the abatement's occurring. And so then developer isn't going to get any incentive, at least for the five first five years, they're not going to see anything until the end. So you you're probably going to want to do a fifty percent abatement for five years. And then the TIF abatement on top of that for for the duration of pay for the infrastructure. Does that make sense? I mean, that would be one approach you could take.
Lots of conversation, but you're not getting your answers quite yet, are you? I'm sorry. We're 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 just on uncharted territory, I mean, it's, we never had to be in this position before.
Well, it's it's not just Carroll, Iowa, it's a lot of places.
Yeah, we're not alone.
You know, we're, we've all heard the employment problem, you know, people not coming to Carroll because no homes. But I I really don't want to. I don't want to say not do something because I don't want to be. Responsible for having a business leave or not getting businesses here in town because we don't do anything. You know, times have changed and that's where we're at now with this. Is it frustrating to spend tax money on something like this? Yes, but. We're in that position. Yeah, we're in that position, we have to change what we do with our tax money.
I'll tell you, so right away, when I looked at Timber Creek, having a tax abatement, I initially thought, wow, why would we do that? If somebody can afford to build that expensive of a house, why would you do that? Send back looking at it, you know, somebody pulled the trigger, builds that house, it opens up something underneath that. And then another one underneath that. Just looking here quick off the Assessor website, a four hundred thousand dollar house paying six grand in property taxes. And another one I pulled up, nine hundred thousand paying thirteen thousand. You know, I think if we looked at a tax abatement, you know, two to five years, you know. On the low end, you know, it's twelve thousand to thirty grand of tax abatement that they're going to save. On a pending on the dollar value of the house. I think it would get people to build down there. Opening up some other.
Four to five years or broke even?
Yes, we have all of nothing now. We're going to be getting all of something later on. Down in Timber Creek.
And then what do we do with the other sixty-two hundred and fifty lots that are sitting out there? That are existing, I'm just saying including Timber Creek.
Yep, yeah. I personally think you directly incentivize the builder.
I mean, that's what we're here to do, to say.
If things change.
All the interviews I did with the contractors and realtors and, you know. There's money out there to buy these homes, but we can't get the contractors to build them, that's the number one problem.
So Mike, say there's a house that sits on the market for a year, so there's a spec house that's built, sits on the market for a year. You know, we partner up with the banks on helping pay some interest if something's sitting in the market. Is there a way to put a tax abatement on a house, an individual house, that sits on the market for over a year to help that developer sell it?
I mean, well, you have to do, an abatement isn't for one property, it's for a district. So you you can't create an abatement for one single property to say, this is a spec home, here's your abatement. And then if it sells, we're going to take the abatement away.
So say.
Now, if you created an entire city abatement, they would get the benefit, the abatement goes with the land, not the owner. So they would get the benefit of any abatement you create.
So say that this house is built, it's listed on the market, one year from today. Every house out there, if it's not sold in a year, there's a tax payment on it, candidate.
You can't create a program like that. Every 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 home gets the same availability to get the abatement.
And the same abatement that it currently exists as of today.
Or any.
If we make a change, if we make a new change.
And here here was some numbers, these are, you know, probably about a year to two years old, but. It is one of the abatement kind of schedules we had talked about in the past during some other housing meetings we had. Where here's the value of a home, now this is. City abate, this is all property tax abatement, city, county, school, and some different values, you can see what that provides. How is this a hundred percent for five years?
Half a million dollar home, thirty-six thousand, that that might get people to jump on it.
I think so too, you have all of that. After that point.
So in ten years, you broke even.
Now, now the question becomes, as you look at abatement, I also think you want to, I do think you have to do a citywide. Versus just a single neighborhood. Because you're really going to create some market issues.
I'm not saying get rid of the a hundred percent for the first seventy-five thousand value as well.
I think whatever, I think if you do any abatement, I think you need to do a citywide at the same abatement level. Because I think you're going to, I think it's going to create some market issues. And frankly, I think it's going to create some potential political. Concerns that you may want to consider. I thought this would be an easy meeting tonight, I probably would be home by six.
Yeah, I didn't leave my car running.
I don't know. I just see this so tied to growing our businesses. And whatever we do, I, I, I still think we need to be aggressive, let's set a cap on ARPA, I get that. Um, and I would like to see us set a cap on ARPA and offer the twenty thousand to get things going, cause ARPA is limited for more years. Um, but, I don't think, I think it is, we do need to show urgency, or we will lose businesses. Because, and I know, uh, Laverne, you went to the League of Cities MLA three. I, I know very little about economic development, but I learned a lot last April when I sat in on a seminar by the Assistant City Manager in Urbendale, he's also the Director of, um, of Economic Development for Urbendale. And he said, and I, I brought the slides, I'd send them to anybody who wants them, it's very interesting what attracts workforce and grows economy, a, a city's economy, keeps it sustainable, so that you build your tax base and you keep bringing in businesses, you bring in builders, you bring in people. And he said, it was the eighty-twenty rule, eighty percent of the growth that takes place in a city, large or small, is from existing businesses that it, in that city. Twenty percent of the growth comes from outside. He was very knowledgeable, he, he's very bright. And thinking back on that, I just believe that being aggressive, we will not regret it. Because in the long term, it will hopefully grow our businesses, attract a labor force, and prevent possible businesses from leaving. Because the people they wanna hire can't find homes. So I see it as, uh, a plus for attracting developers, builders, as well as building a workforce, keeping our businesses. It's all linked together.
So a question I have is, if we do a citywide tax abatement for unlimited amount? Or, or high, you know, you got six hundred and fifty, so we go there. So we do that citywide, and somebody remodels their house to, or adds on to their house, let's say, not remodel, and they do a two hundred thousand dollar addition, that would be abated now.
Correct.
Okay. Then the other thing is, if we're going to do the tax abatement on, like a scale you guys showing here, but then in Northridge, if we do the ARPA funds, are those people going to be able to double dip? Do the ARPA funds and abatement also?
That's a policy decision for the council to make.
Alright.
I mean, I think, again, how are you targeting your fun, how are you targeting the incentive? And what are you trying to spur? The, I know there's a lot of discussion about, well, we don't want the builders to be enriched. But the builders are the ones we're trying to attract right now.
Right.
And that's a tough conversation to have out there of, you know, we want the ultimate taxpayer to, to receive all the benefit. But, it's, the homeowners unfortunately are not driving that train right now. It's the builders that are driving that train. And so, I thi, you know, the suggestion is you need to match the incentive to where the failure is. The market failure in my mind is in the area of builders.
I agree.
And so, you know, it's just a suggestion from staff is, I think you avoid abatement for the time being, now, if that's the direction you wanna go, I, again, I think you need to do it citywide, because you're gonna create issues. Because then you're gonna have two houses potentially, one has abatement, one doesn't. I mean, I can go down and, I can, in Timber Creek, I can go buy a lot, costs more, but I can build a three hundred thousand dollar house there. And now I'm gonna get a hundred percent abatement for ten years, and Northridge is not gonna have that same abatement schedule?
Right.
That's problematic.
Right.
It's gotta be citywide.
So I think you have to do your abatement citywide. The other thing is, if, if you're gonna do, if the builder's a failure again, I don't mean that in a bad way, it's just a market failure that's happening. Um, you need to target the incentive there, you, I'm just showing an example, cause this is a slide I have readily available of a hundred percent for five years, I do think you need to do like fifty percent for ten years, so you preserve some TIF room to, to incentivize a lot development in the future. Cause again, Lamar Coty is gonna come forward at some point, or the next developer of Lamar Coty's property, and they're gonna need the, the incentive, and if you have tax abatement, you start heading down that direction, that's less incentive we can do long term. And if you do, you know, we probably need to run some port forma numbers on what a development looks like with even a fifty percent ten-year tax abatement. Because we may not have the TIF room to rebate the, the developer back on what he needs to get for the infrastructure. So it gets really complicated when you start layering TIF and abatement on top of each other.
Any other thoughts? We're at that moment of awkward silence.
At one point I had a line in this slide, and I don't anymore, but TIF and abatement, you know, they just, they don't work well together to do both, you can do it, you just have to be very conscious about it.
I wasn't so worried about combining those two, I'm looking at the ARPA funds. So if you were offering TIF, I don't, I can't calculate in my head, but you might be looking at, well, I don't wanna do the ARPA funds, cause I get a better, more money earned, abatement, depending on the size of the home you built, so. How do you, how do you avoid that complication?
Mike, can you, um, remind us? It may, it may have nothing to do with us here, but what happened in Adele with abatement? Do you remember?
Yep.
Can you tell me what happened?
So, this was the building permit history in Adele. Um, and, and what really happened was the, the community became really concerned, because all these homes were coming online that had abatement. And my existing home that I've lived in for twenty years doesn't have abatement anymore, maybe the values are exactly the same.
So it was an area?
Well, it was vacant the whole town.
Okay.
But if you live in an existing neighborhood, and you're trying to sell your house, and it doesn't have abatement, and the new neighborhood has a hundred percent abatement for five years or ten years, it makes it harder to, your house loses value because you're competing against abatement.
That's what I meant, though, it was.
That was one of the things, and so, you know, Adele ended up phasing it out, um, and ending abatement. Now, um, if you look, early on when we showed these numbers, I think when we first were talking about it, it was in like twenty twenty, maybe even twenty nineteen, when we first looked at the numbers, it was a huge drop off. But as we went back and kept talking to the city of Adele, you know, they've actually seen, and, and as I talked to the city manager down there, uh, was very surprised on how many houses started, cause kind of once you got that engine going, it's going now. Uh, so even though they ended abatement now, um, so that's why, how they started it in kind of, in a nutshell, what happened in Adele.
Create a hu- huge problem for their school system too.
Yeah, we don't wanna do that.
Yep, I mean, I don't see us building a hundred, I mean, first of all, we don't have a hundred and nineteen lots available. Now, that would be a good problem, but, um, you know, we have seventy lots available, so there is kind of a constraint from that perspective. Now, we get burnt through those seventy lots, I mean, if we, if all seventy lots built this year, we'd probably have another seventy on lots available by next fall. Because there's land lined up in future areas of Carroll that developers would, would start developing tomorrow, if they started seeing that happen, it wouldn't take long to get more lots online.
Are we ready to give Mike some marching orders here? Some direction, and your thoughts are? You know, Kyle and Carolyn wanna see it at twenty? Fair?
That's the ARPA, that's the ARPA fund, right?
And, and using the ARPA fund, yeah.
With a cap, whatever, yeah, whatever that would look like to get there.
You know, I, if, if you were asking for my advice, what I would say is cap, um, Northridge now at one round of lot purchases. So that would get you at initial investment of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Your cost would be somewhere, I would not go out and purchase any of the non-discounted lots. So, worst case scenario, your, your cost would be a hundred and six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. So I would cap Northridge at that.
At the five fifty?
So five fifty, but, with ARPA, but you're gonna sell it, so your ultimate cost, you're gonna recoup all but a hundred and six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. So that would be your cost in Northridge. And then, I would pick a number of five to ten additional incentives for infill lots outside of Northridge, outside of the rolling hills. And then if you wanna include Timber Creek or not, and then in- incentivize the rest of the community. I mean, those are decisions, but, but I would, I would, I would exclude rolling hills, I would exclude Northridge. Cause we're gonna work, we're working those incentives differently. Um, and do infill with that. That would be my suggestion with ARPA, so that, you, you know, your total, all-in cost of ARPA would be between, you know, two hundred to three hundred thousand. And then I would do the, I would do the rolling hills, you know, um, TIF agreement, that'll come later, but that's not ARPA funds.
Okay, so ultimately, uh, the total number of lots, we would look at purchasing uh, with a twenty thousand dollar incentive would be the, um, how many, Mike?
You're doing twenty thousand now, so, um, that'd be a hundred and fifty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars now. Sorry. My, my original number was based on a fifteen thousand dollar incentive.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Sorry.
I, I wasn't clear, I don't know.
No, you, you're, you're a good catch.
You're talking twenty-two lots. Is that what you're saying, in that group? That could be purchased?
I would purchase ten out of Northridge.
Ten among the?
Yep, out of, out of the thirty, or, yeah, out of the twenty-two, I see what you're saying, out of the twenty-two, I'd, I'd purchase ten of those.
Okay.
Okay. With that five fifty cap, twenty thousand incentive.
Yep.
Okay.
And then if ARPA, if you wanna do the twenty thousand, it would be a straight twenty thousand in ARPA.
Well, I, I think it's good, I mean, look at the price of the twenty-two, fifty-three, fifty-eight originally. They, people can put money into their homes instead of into the lots. And will have good taxable value down the road. I, I, I'm thinking, I'm.
Now, is there an area you wanna target those lots, or, I mean, again, I would, I would exclude rolling hills, cause we'll do the TIF agreement there.
Yeah.
I would exclude Northridge, because we're doing this setup here.
Right.
Then do you want to, Timber Creek, do you want them eligible for the twenty thousand?
I think you hold off on those until there's, you know, a tax payment or something.
I, I think.
You do what?
I think you hold off on those lots until there's a tax payment or something.
Now, certainly, if you build a, a half million dollar, or two, a million dollar house up there, people are gonna move up. At least you hope they do.
I just, yeah, and, and that kind of makes me go back to the part, you know, a lot, there's seventy grand. Take twenty grand off, yeah, that's still a lot of money, but you still have fifty grand in a lot where I think it's a real need, and the best result is this area.
To get working people, I think Kim was right.
I agree.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm asking the questions, just so I get clear direction of where you wanna go.
I, I think we could put Timber Creek on hold, but bring it back at some point.
Okay.
We could, we could look at this two, three times a year.
Yep.
Let's get it started. Get past the first ten. Take a look at it then.
So the infill lot, what we do with the infill lots, and things that are sitting out there, in already developed neighborhoods, I can, I'll use the Oakwood and Edgewood area, and then just driving around town, I know there's a couple other ones. Lots that are sitting around, that we can do something to.
What I would suggest is you tell me how many lots you wanna incentivize, and I think that's how we set the program up. So if you wanna do ten lots, we'll put another two hundred thousand dollars out of ARPA, and we'll incentivize those ten lots, and it's a first come, first served. And, and I think you make it a strict criteria of, we'll give you twelve months or eighteen months to construct. And that'll be the, you know, we'll enter into an agreement, and then they get the money at the time.
With a minimum taxable value at X dollars.
Okay. What do you?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think you do ten, ten of those lots, first come, first served, wherever they sit at, with a minimum taxable value, and you throw twenty grand at that.
And, and I would, I would say you'd wanna, you know, the workforce housing tax credit program, I'll look it up here quick, but I think that is like two hundred and sixty.
A house that fits the neighborhood, not one that doesn't have a garage or anything like that.
Um, you know, so they're setting that for a single-family home at two hundred and sixty-six thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. That's the building value, so I would maybe suggest that as a value, cause that's kind of a state verified number.
We don't want a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, Ben, where it's stuff.
Yep.
What's the number, Mike, two hundred and sixty what?
Two sixty-six, three twenty.
And again, you're just incentivizing the builder on these existing lots.
Yep.
Twenty grand. And, and if you're gonna use ARPA in this way, it has to be towards, um, workforce creation, which has to go towards the builder, cannot go towards the homeowner.
Let's hope these get snapped up, so we have to look at it again.
But Kyle, are you saying then that the, the lots that are currently owned by these people, that you know they would sell them?
No, I'm just saying, if, if I'm a guy that has construction, and I'm sitting on these lots.
Yes.
Um, if you directly incentivize them to build something within a year, or within two years, whatever it is, they would also qualify.
But how are you going to incentivize them if they already own the lot? But you're just.
It's gonna be through, you're gonna use the provision in state code that, for job creation, and you're gonna incentivize the builder, you create the jobs to build the house, they build the house. And then at the time of CO, we're going to basically provide you an incentive of twenty thousand dollars for creating those jobs during home construction.
But would it still be twenty thousand dollars then, whereas in?
Whatever, whatever number.
In Northwood, we're, you, you're using the, the discount included in the fifteen or thirty, or twenty.
So just so I understand, you're saying that a builder has to go hire somebody to help him build the house in order to get the twenty grand?
Yep, and some of it can be subcontractors, I mean, doesn't necessarily need to be them hiring a person per se.
Okay, so if they own the lot, they're actually getting a little better deal going into it.
They could. And maybe, maybe it's too complicated, maybe you just say everyone, Northridge is gonna get the same level for everything. Now, you lose that little bit of discount that we could get from the developer. But it, again, it's less cash out way the city has to make.
Any other thoughts? I really, you know, I don't have anything more to add, I mean, we talked it through, but we just don't really quite have the direction you're looking for. And and you're pretty, uh, two weeks from now, pretty well gone, right? Are you gone in two weeks?
Be somehow in a council meeting.
Okay.
Uh, if I'm peddling that Monday, I will be here virtually.
I don't think we've heard anybody say no.
Okay.
Right, I mean, so I mean, I think you're getting some direction.
What I need though is, what I really, I I, and let me throw something out there and and just see if there's traction on it. Um. You know, we, again, I think there's some value in trying to do the Northridge and get a little bit of discount from the developer, cause again, that saves city cash. Um, so, you know, we do what was suggested that we'll buy ten lots. Um, and that will ultimately net out to be a hundred and fifty-six thousand two fifty. Um, and then infill will offer uh the first ten that come in to, as long as they agree to build a home within eighteen months from sign up, um, a twenty thousand dollar incentive to be paid at time of CO with a minimum assessed value of two hundred and sixty-six thousand three hundred and twenty dollars.
Third point.
Can you have all that ready in a week?
It's gonna be great.
I wouldn't mind coming back a week from today just to get this one item done and get rolling on it. Cause I grieve, if we get too late on this.
Yeah, it gets into winter.
I agree too.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
And he's gonna be gone that second week, it might be, it might be tough to get it done.
I'm gone this week. But I'll get it done, cause that's the way I am.
But I I think there's some urgency, I don't have any problem coming back for a special meeting to get this rolling. It should only last. I wrote down, I'm here Kyle.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, get something moving, that way if somebody is interested, they could at least get concrete footings, things like that, framed up to where they have a winter project inside, work done.
Right.
Yep.
So.
Going back to your thought, you said you didn't wanna have them putting up a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home. How how did you say that before?
Well, we don't wanna give twenty thousand dollars to somebody to build a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home.
Correct, I I don't think you can build a hundred and fifty thousand.
I know, I know that, I was just throwing that.
In the same sense with where some of these NCAP homes are, or the lots, what is their value? Are you gonna have them build a house next to the other ones that are worth a hundred and twenty-three thousand, if there's an empty lot? See what I'm saying? I mean, are you gonna, I I've seen that before, where they build a huge house and a smaller.
That would be up to each individual though.
Yeah, I think the infill lots will be tougher, just because they're already older, developed neighborhoods. But lots are much cheaper to where incentivize somebody to build something.
But I think to Mike's point, eh eh there's gotta be some kind of minimum assessed value in there, you know?
I just didn't want him to scare off the assessed value to saying, well, I'm never gonna touch that piece of land.
Yeah.
Cause I'm not gonna build a two hundred and sixty thousand dollar home next to two of them that are a hundred and twenty or eighty or whatever it may be.
But at this point, there's a lot of, there are lots to choose from, so we could probably address that down the road.
Mike, so.
And and I do think we need to really look at that number of two hundred and sixty-six thousand. Um. It may be too high.
I think so.
Cause I think, eh, what I'm looking at is a dwelling value, I don't care about the land value.
I think you're pricing out a lot of people to buy a home or to incentivize it, the workforce, the working people.
I think if you interfere with.
Somebody out there to go say, hey, let's go spend two hundred and seventy thousand bucks, just because I saved twenty on the lot.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Two twenty-five.
Maybe it could be a sliding scale, maybe it's depending on the value of what the houses are around that area, you know? And maybe you don't get twenty thousand, maybe you get ten.
Well, keep your nightmare.
A week, and we're gonna do it in a meeting, Mike didn't have anything to do.
So if, Mike, if these are, if these are multifamily, so say a duplex, triplex, fourplex townhouse style on an infill lot, is there a dollar amount that would, they would have to meet as well? For, you know, workforce?
Say, say that part again, I'm sorry.
So say you have some of these infill lots, whether, wherever they're at in town, and you're able to put a duplex or a triplex or a fourplex on them.
I think those are.
You meet the two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, you'd be fine, wouldn't you?
Do you mean each unit or?
Yeah, I don't, because one of the things in the finance, Iowa Finance Authority, they've talked about each unit.
Yeah.
Um.
And and I was gonna ask the question, I had a follow-up question, and I'm gonna ask it now, is, is it twenty thousand dollars per home or per lot?
Per lot, I think, because otherwise people are gonna put, now that you don't wanna put duplexes up, but.
Can you even put a duplex on a single lot?
Yes.
Yeah, you can.
I mean, are they? Okay.
Yeah. You know, I I think if you put a duplex up, I think you're gonna, you're gonna see some small savings, but I think as a single-family home value, you're still gonna hit that number, and so you know, you could say no instead of, let's say you pick two sixty-six, I don't think you would say we want, you know, five hundred thousand dollar home on it. Um, but you could say we want at least a four hundred thousand dollar duplex. I I would leave it simple and just say, per lot's twenty thousand, per lot, the, I would probably say the minimum new dwelling value would be like two hundred, maybe two twenty-five. And we're looking just at dwelling value, we're not looking at lot and dwelling.
Yep, no, I think that'd be good, be more affordable, more feasible for most of the population.
We'll just start there, see what happens.
What was the amount you said?
Two hundred to two twenty-five.
Okay, thanks.
We're writing notes on top of our notes.
I know.
Yeah, I don't have any room left in my notes.
Okay.
All righty.
Enough?
I think it's enough, and we can talk about it if, I guess the question would be um.
If you wanna meet Monday?
Av- availability, we can put something together for next Monday, if that's a desire of the council. Are you available?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'd be forward to.
Eighteenth, I think so.
Eighteenth?
Yeah.
Not a.
You're not.
You know, it's good that Facebook has video chat.
Not if it's gonna be two hours.
Not do it on Facebook.
Just kidding.
What?
Friday.
I'll be gone. We have.
I I can't do this week, rest of this week.
Alright.
What about Monday morning? Instead of Monday night? Perfect.
What, what time?
Eight o'clock?
Eight.
We're basically just meeting to agree on all this, or vote on it, right?
Correct.
That's all we're gonna do?
Or we can meet in two weeks and, eh, I mean, if you think this is all gonna be easy peasy. I will be at the meeting in two weeks.
Okay.
I just don't know if I'll be here or virtual, but I will be at the council meeting, one way or another.
Well, you've got direction, right?
Yep.
What, whatever works.
I don't think there's, I mean, if if you guys are comfortable with kind of the framework of this, I don't think we need to meet in a special meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, accommodated, but I don't think we need to.
If the phone starts ringing tomorrow from builders, saying I got cash, well, just tell them, show us the money.
Show us the money, right.
Okay, did you hear that, builders? Okay, anything else on the subject before we close it out on this one? Okay, I had an agenda in here somewhere, um, alright, that's it, committee reports, there are none, comments from the mayor, there are none. Comments from the city council, there is one, Laverne.
Kinda update you on some of the stuff that eh that I'm doing. Uh, when I was on the school board for ten years, I really went into a lot of the classrooms and got a good rapport with the the teachers and and the other staff. And it really helped with some of the stuff that I was doing on school board. And so when I came on city council, I went like to the police, rode in the police car, I've been to all the other buildings, and I'm like, I still wanna do more. So about a month ago, um, I had the idea of going out to patrons, just people in the, in the community, businesses or whatever, singles people, and I asked the mayor to join me and just go out and talk. And I will tell you, it's been really good, we've got some, we've been on this a month now. And we've gotten a lot of good, we've been able to help a couple businesses clarify some information, and two of them have used that to expand their business, just not knowing what's going on with the city. And so I I guess, you know, Mark and I have been going for a month now, and and Mark is really good at, when we walk in, to get everybody feeling comfortable, he's the car salesman type person, and, but it it's been a good team, Mark and I. And we come in and and we've gone back to some of these businesses by phone calls, they want us to come back and talk to them. And so uh that's been good, and we're gonna continue it, and and now I'm saying if any one of you guys wanna join us, just let me know, and and we're trying to do, what, two a week at the most? Like last week, we didn't have anything but holiday, but we're just going out and just saying, hey, we're city council people, good dialogue. What do you like, what do you don't like, you know, tell us about your business. Uh, we had one business that we talked to and found out that we're the building they're in. This housing thing that Debbie Durham was here talking about last week, there's a possibility that business could be used for future housing, so we learned that, so it's it's just great dialogue and and.
And when you say future housing, it's upper level?
Yes, that one was, happened to be upper level. But it's just, you know, what's going on out there, and and uh so far, uh, everybody that we call, I call them up of like a week or two weeks early to let them know that we schedule a day so they have time to think about stuff. And what we would, we thought would be fifteen minutes to a half hour, or lasting an hour to hour and a half on these meetings, cause it's been great dialogue. It's Mark, Mark takes twenty minutes to, you know, get everybody smooth.
And I, and I, I haven't sold a single car yet, I'm working on it.
But it's really good.
Do you wanna mention Doug Burns at all, Doug's not here, but there might be a news story on.
Yeah, Doug, Doug caught wind of this, and he called me, and he wants to do a story on this. So I wanted to make sure that you guys knew I was doing this before you read it in the paper. But you can surely come, it's 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 quite interesting on some of these that we talk about. And, you know, we we run into some people that are very young that are running some good businesses.
Impressive young people out there.
And, you know, we'll run into people that don't like what's going on, and we'll deal with that too, but. So if there's, you know, once Doug puts it in the paper, I'm sure we'll probably have some calls from people to say, hey, we wanna have you come to us, so. Uh, if you, if you wanna join us, let us know.
Thanks, Laverne. Um, any comments from anybody else?
I have one, one other thing, uh, just with the storm, I I've had some complaints from people in the city of having limited hours at the landfill, which is kind of beyond our control as that, as a county. Uh, or no place to bring their, their brush and and how they charge. So I, I don't know if that's something that we could look at in the future, of maybe having an area that the city does for brush or grass, especially on weekends for people, I know it's a, gonna be an added expense, but it would be a convenience for a lot of people too, but.
It's a substantial cost for the city to do it. Um, and it also opens up a lot of concerns, just, we get a lot of, I know a lot of communities that do offer it. Um, there's just issues with people just dumping trash and and other rubble there. Um, we can have that, eh, certainly, you know, the the storms we had, you know, they're very disruptive, and it does create um, a lot of cleanup issues, and, you know, that's a balancing act where some cities do offer that historically, Carroll has not, has been one of those communities that don't. Um, just cause it takes a lot of labor to go pick up uh all the debris and dispose of it.
And and I'm not, I haven't heard anything feedback on, you know, the city should come help us pick things up.
Oh, we have.
Just, uh, sure, uh, just, just on, you know, limited landfill hours and and, you know, how they're charging on on something like this. And, you know, is this something the city would ever look at doing, so, just passing that information on if it's something feasible and something that makes sense for the citizens and us.
You know, we've had a a good partnership with the landfill, and historically, they've served that role for the city. Um, you know, what I would suggest is we, i- if it's a direction the council really wants to do, is we look at ways to enhance that relationship where even if we say, okay, you're a Carroll resident, we cover the cost, because I would rather almost do that approach in a controlled manner out there than have us have a a landfill pile. I see Chad nodding his head up and down like.
I mean, I've done it on both sides of it, I've, you know, we had our own area, and we also provided an area for them to go and dump. We had an incinerator system in Shenandoah, and just the overall amount of hours. I mean, it was a headache, and then when you do have a dump site, it's anything and everything but trees and limbs. Usually.
Yep.
I mean, you have some that that do it the right way, but you end up with just garbage, and then we have to double back, pick it all up, and then take it back to the landfill anyway.
I'll be at Solid Waste Commission meeting in the morning, and.
Yeah, I know, just on the way home today from, in my drive from Pocahontas to here, uh, I had two messages on it and a phone call earlier in the day, so.
I hear it a lot about the four-thirty, you know, more so than anything.
I called when they were closing at four, and then they're not open on Saturdays, which, you know, disrupts some people or doesn't let some people get there, so.
I'll mention it again, and, yeah.
At least have, you know, try to have.
I just know my experience from the county is it just.
A longer hour or something more convenient for people to be able to get there.
It's been raised several times, and there's just a reluctance to be open, you know, past four, and, uh, you know, but I'll bring it up, I definitely will.
And I think part of the balance and all that is, um, they have garbage haulers that they need, they really have to start collecting trash early in the morning and try to get it done early. Otherwise, by afternoon, with all the vehicles and the and the movement, it's just, it's more difficult for them to operate. And so they need to be open early in the day to allow that disposal to occur. Um, and so if you say we're gonna stay open till four-thirty or five, you're adding almost another shift on the day.
I was just saying, you know, like, in an instance like this, to get people, have people, you know, help them get things cleaned up, if it was open till five or six, to where, you know, most people aren't getting off work till five, to be, at least get some things out there, I guess, so.
Understandable.
Any other comments? Okay, I'm seeking a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn, roll call please.
Bauer?
Yes.
Ordinaro?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Face?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
We are adjourned.